Can I also give you the general announcements? And that is that the fire alarm sounds, it's for real. And all members in the chamber and those in the public gallery are to make their way out of the building and to go to the fire assembly point outside the great hall. Please make sure your mobile phones are either on mute or switched off throughout the meeting. Can I also, or may I also, welcome our honorary alderman? I can see ex-councillor Keith Chapman and alderman Michael Woodhall up there. So, welcome to the meeting. First of all then, item one, may I have apologies for this meeting? Do we have any apologies?
Councillor Ken, Jane?
There we have. Those are the apologies on the screen. I shan't read them through, you can see for yourselves who's there. Yes, I don't think there's a majority on there, don't worry. Right, are there any further apologies from the floor that haven't been on the screen? Councillor Irish, thank you very much. Right, Councillor Drew?
Councillor Chris Donald, he wanted me to say that he was suffering from flu. I know his apologies are on the screen, but he was very specific in asking me to let you and others know that he was suffering from flu. So I fulfilled my part of the bargain I have with him. Thank you, Chairman.
You will need to make declarations of interest when we get to that part of the meeting. And I've been asked to read the declarations of interest to you, so that we're all quite clear. Obviously that will apply to the items further on the agenda. So, all members who believe they have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter, if you consider it at the meeting, must declare that interest and have, having regard to Part Three, Paragraph One Point Five of the County Council Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with Paragraph One Point Six of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the time of the meeting should consider having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Four of the code, whether such an interest should be declared. And having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Five of the code, consider whether it's appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Now, members, you will have received from the monitoring officer an email setting out the position on declarations of interest. And you will have noted his advice that members who are members of other local authorities should declare personal and pecuniary interests in the items on devolution and local government reorganisation. You will also have noted the monitoring officer's advice that all members have the benefit of a dispensation granted by the Conduct Advisory Panel, enabling them to fully participate and vote in any business of the county council where they may otherwise be prevented from doing so in consequence of being in receipt of a member's allowance. The monitoring officer's advice also covered the question of personal interests. And you would have noted his advice that members should also declare a personal interest and his view that, subject to their own consideration of the matter, such an interest should not prevent them from fully participating in this meeting. In addition, the monitoring officer advised that members who are not members of any other local authority and who remain at the meetings will be recorded, unless they are specifically requesting otherwise, as declaring pecuniary interest in Agenda Item Five, the LGR item, as they are in receipt of an allowance under the Hampshire County Council Members' Allowances Scheme, but will fully participate in the meeting as a result of the dispensation granted by the Conduct Advisory Panel. We will now use the electronic voting system to enable all members who are members of other local authorities to declare their interests. If you want to declare your interests, please vote yes to the question posed. And remember, the question you are voting on is, do you want to declare that you have pecuniary and personal interest in Agenda Items Four and Five, the local government reorganisation and devolution items, as you are in receipt of an allowance under the Hampshire County Council Members' Allowances Scheme, and you are a member of another relevant authority, including the fire authority, affected by the business being discussed and in receipt of an allowance under the Members' Allowances Scheme of that other authority? Would you kindly please vote now? Right, you'll see the score on the screen. I apologise for the long reading out, but you can tell a lawyer wrote it, not me. Right. Anyone require any assistance with voting? Has your vote shown up on there? You can change your vote. Right, are you happy that I declare the vote closed?
Can you advise?
Close, close it and we'll record councillor's vote. We'll record his interest separately.
Right, we will close the voting but record your interest separately. It'll be recorded, you know, by the officers. Right, I now declare the vote closed. And you'll see that yes, sixty-seven percent, no one and abstained four. Right, let's move on. Chairman's announcements, I have no announcements to make, bearing in mind the nature of our meeting, other than to remind you that the business meeting is on October the second. And that meeting, I have been advised, will start at ten a.m. without a prayer or reflections. We'll go back to prayers and reflections at the November meeting, I understand. That's the advice I've received. So can you make sure that on the second of October, you're all here at ten o'clock for a start? Moving on then to the next item on the agenda, it's Part One matters for decision. And this is item four, the devolution update and the next steps. And this is between pages three and page sixty-four. I'm going to invite the leader to make a report. And obviously there'll be a period for questions afterwards. Right, leader, would you kindly make your report?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Two, just very quick things to say ahead of beginning to talk about the devolution report. The first thing is just to say that there are no prayers and reflections at the next meeting, because we are appointing aldermen, if you remember. So we've got a couple of aldermen to appoint at a special meeting first and then go into the normal meeting. So do please come along to that first part. And the second thing is, just as a commentary about the, after the commentary about the number of apologies, I'm so glad that we were able to move the date of this meeting to accommodate the Liberal Democrat Conference. As a consequence, the various meetings that we had, other people had organised to go to that were otherwise going to be on Monday, has meant that there are a few people missing today as a consequence of that. But we're about to talk about devolution and local government reorganisation. I don't intend to give very long introductions to either, other than to give you an update on the devolution process, which I have to say is by far and away the more positive of the two different things that we're talking about. That's been going really well. Relations between the various authorities remain really good. We meet on a monthly basis as a group of four upper-tier leaders to talk through the various plans that we have. And the work that has been going on to begin to prepare for the combined authority and for what will be a mayoral election on the seventh of May next year is proceeding really well. So I'm grateful to all of the officers across all four of the authorities who've been working very hard. The project team in Southampton, who are based in Southampton City Council, are working well. To the statutory instrument that sets out the detail of the combined authority and the devolution process and the devolution deal that we will receive is with us. We have been able to look at it. We have been asking for a number of changes. The government are pretty clear that this is not a negotiation, as we have seen in the past around devolution deals. This is a devolution in a box, as Steve Pitt, the leader of Portsmouth describes it. We have a statutory instrument. It tells us what we're doing. It gives us the powers that we are looking at. Essentially, it also tells us that after the first year of the mayoralty, as long as everything is going well, we then obtain what's called a right to request. That means that we can then begin to talk about further powers. We have not as yet had a public announcement of the funding settlement that is going to be offered to us as part of that deal, that we understand will be coming out from the government in the next few, next couple of weeks. But I think the important thing to say is, from the conversations that we've had, it is substantially more than the three hundred million we were initially offered. And so holding out for a higher amount by the four of us has worked very well. And that it will be one of the largest settlements that has ever been given to a combined authority area, the establishment of devolution. And that is the important point. That's where we begin to get the funding and to get the powers that enable whoever becomes mayor to change our area for the better. There are a few bumps along the way, and that is why I suspect that we will need to have a separate cabinet meeting later in October, just to confirm the final details. And the reason for that is that we are working with our partners to arrange an agreement that will sit alongside the statutory instrument to manage the governance and how the mayoral authority will operate. And the main, is not a sticking point, but is a point that is still being negotiated at the moment, is because the combined authority, if you remember, will comprise five members plus the mayor. Under the current arrangement, there will be one for each of the three unitary authorities and two for Hampshire. So of the five local authority members, we will hold forty percent of the votes. And that's been clear from the government from day one, something that we've accepted. But what we can't accept is the risk that if there is an overspend on any budget that is set by the combined authority in the time during which we are responsible for being part of it, then currently, the statutory instrument suggests that we would need to pay a proportion of the overspend equal to our population. Our population share of the entire area is seventy percent. So each of the Isle of Wight and Southampton and Portsmouth have a voting proportion that is greater than their population share. They each have twenty percent, we have forty percent. Their population shares respectively for Southampton, Portsmouth and the island are thirteen, ten and seven. So if there is an overspend, and generally, looking at previous iterations of devolved areas and agreements like this, there have not been any major overspends. But if there is an overspend or a cost that needs to be shared amongst the constituent partners, not covered by the amount that is paid to the combined authority by government, and it is of benefit to the entire area, absolutely, we should pay a share equal to the proportion of our population. But if there were an agreement, for example, to extend a budget purely to benefit one of the other constituent partners, our feeling is that as a consequence of their having a greater voting share and being able to agree to that arrangement without our consent, our share should be equivalent to our voting proportion. And I have to say, the conversations around that are positive. David has been working very hard with his fellow legal officers in the other authorities to come up with an agreement that can sit alongside that to which we will all agree. We have had conversations as leaders to just explain where we feel the risk lies and what is and is not acceptable to us. So that is all quite positive, but we're not quite there in terms of defining all of the details of that. And as a consequence, this is something that is not going to be, is providing you with an update, it's providing you with the ability to question me and to question the team about how we're doing. It does not mean that we are recommending to, or that the cabinet will approve the statutory instrument until such times we have that alongside us, because there is too much risk to us, otherwise, from a financial perspective, in having to pick up seventy percent of the cost of things that we may not, to which we may not consent. And as a consequence, if we're not consenting to it, it's not benefiting our residents. We feel that there should be not so great an amount of cost placed upon the county council. In terms of the establishment of the mayoral authority, some of our members will be very interested in how that's being established and the kind of staff that's being employed. We're not employing many. We're taking what's viewed as a bronze-plus approach. We were given different options of, gold would be to entirely employ a staff that would be there ready to work straight away. What we want to ensure is that the mayor, once elected, is able to hit the ground running. They have an establishment that is ready to go and begin to deliver on their priorities. But we equally completely understand that that person may well wish to choose their own office accommodation, their own location in Hampshire in the Solent from which to operate, their own senior officers. And, you know, quite frankly, there is no point us employing on a temporary basis a head of legal or a head of finance for the combined authority, because there are officers in the existing councils around the county area and the unitaries who are able to undertake that work and the work that is necessary to lead up and to establish and to get the combined authority on its feet, ready for the mayor to be elected. And then to help the mayor choose their own permanent team once he or she is elected on May the seventh and is inducted into their position on May the eleventh. So having an agile and flexible arrangement that can then react to whoever the mayor is, I think is by far and away the most sensible and also cost-effective way of setting everything up. That's what we're doing. And we are ensuring that consequently, we are staying well within the budget that has been set for us, both in terms of establishment of the combined authority and the arrangements to put everything in place. Final thing to say is that we are equally preparing for the elections. And as you will see within this paper, it asks us to approve Portsmouth as the returning officer for the elections. They will oversee the mayoral election when it occurs. One of the major costs and one of the things why we think it might overrun is that councillor Todd will be glad to know that you get a full two pages of a booklet that has got to be mailed to every single elector, never mind household. You get loads of these things sent through your doorstep. So if you've got lots of children, you've got a whole load of them coming through your door as part of, through the post, as part of the arrangement for the mayoral election. So let's hope we don't get too many mayoral candidates, because it's going to be a very thick book and people are going to have to have quite large letterboxes through which it can go. But that, all of that cost is something that clearly falls into the category where we would be very happy to pay our proportion because of the population. So otherwise, Mr. Chairman, I think that pretty much tells everybody where we are. I recommend this paper to you. It is something that's really positive for our area. We've talked about it before on a number of occasions. This is the win. This is the thing that is worth our attention and worth our positive engagement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right, thank you, leader. Are there any questions for clarification from members, please? I see a question. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. Leader, I did notice with some concern the issues in the report between the imbalance of representation and potential financial risk. And I have to say, that does concern me, because financial risk, when things are tight already for us, could have significant impact upon services that we offer to our residents, particularly the most vulnerable. And therefore, whilst I am confident and I truly hope that our local negotiations to come to a better settlement will bear fruit, I'd like to understand the options if they do not, or if we are not satisfied, that the risks have been properly mitigated.
Leader?
So, thank you for that question, councillor Taylor. The, I'm confident that we're getting to a place where we need to be and that the I'm confident that we're getting to a place that, where we need to be and that the concern that we have is shared. And obviously, if we do then move to a situation of having a number of unitaries on the mainland plus the Isle of Wight through local government reorganization, that in itself gets changed around again. For us, I think it's a red line. And so, you know, we will not agree to a, an open chequebook in sense, in the sense of having to agree to bear seventy percent of every single cost. We are not being asked to do that by our colleagues and by our partners at the minute. So that's why I'm quite confident in saying that I'm sure that we'll get there. What we need to do, though, is have something about which we are all very happy and we can settle upon. There are two other things that I suppose I would mention which give me some confidence around it. Number one, as I've mentioned, the history of other authorities where this tends not to happen. This argument is occurring elsewhere. The same conversation around shared cost and risk is happening in exactly the same way in Essex, where Thurrock and Southend have similarly greater combined authority representation than they do their share of population. And so, that same, the same conversation is happening in that area and in a slightly different but lesser way in Sussex, where Brighton and Hove are equally, and East and West Sussex are in the same place. The other thing that gives me some, I guess, some comfort as well is that when you look at the electoral geography of all of this, if you're asking seventy percent of the voters to fund an overspend that benefits thirty percent or less, that would be a pretty brave mayor that'd go and do that in a situation where the voters having to fund it were receiving no benefit whatsoever. So I think there is a practical and political point there that means that this is probably not going to be a huge risk. And for me, as long as we've got the agreement that doesn't open us to, that gives, sorry, doesn't open us to open-ended risk and does give us a, an agreement that recognizes that our share of cost should, in those circumstances, be limited to our voting proportion, then I'm happy to recommend it because I think the benefits that we obtain far outweigh the risk that we are taking. And ultimately, if we're on the government's course and timeline, and you'll know better than me probably as to whether we are still on that, then we're talking about a period of risk that lasts no more than two years in any event. So the, so combination of time, politics and history probably mean that we are in a relatively safe place.
Right, thank you. A question, please, from councillor Wallace.
Thank you. Is this on a slightly different top, part of the paper? It was actually on the transport. At the date, we've been told that the mayor will be responsible for strategy and that local authorities will remain responsible for delivery. But in this paper, we're talking about, the paper states that the mayor will become the transport authority for our region and will receive funding for this directly from the government. So is that a change that we were anticipating or can you talk about that one, please?
Yes, thanks for the question, Malcolm. It is a change we were anticipating. There's a difference between transport authority and highway authority. So transport authority, for example, means that the B SIP money, the bus service improvement money, would go to the mayor. The, the combined authority and the mayor would become responsible for strategic transport issues, looking at local transport plans, for example, and the kind of work that Solent Transport have undertaken in the past as well. Whereas we would, through the highway authority, still be responsible for delivering on those. So the mayor might have a particular plan that says that they would like to introduce a particular type of, of transport initiative. But then it would be for them to fund that to, to occur. And, but it would be for the councils to deliver because they are the highways authorities and they are the ones that would undertake the work in terms of actually putting in more speed signs or agreeing new bus lanes and that kind of thing. So that's the difference between the two things. There's a difference between transport and highways in that respect in terms of strategy and delivery.
Right, thank you. I don't see any further questions. Are there any further questions? No, thank you very much. In which case then, we'll move on to debate and I'll invite the leader to reply to the debate afterwards. Is there any debate on the matter, please? Councillor Todd, sorry, I'm looking at the room and not at my screen. Councillor Todd, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And obviously, I need to declare a personal interest as a candidate for the mayoralty. I have three thoughts on the sticking point. The first is, I think that we need to, or the council needs to own its decisions on governance and the consequences of that. This council was warned. We had a discussion about the imbalance. Some authorities fed back on the consultation and said that it was a problem. This council didn't. It was asked, to what extent do you agree or disagree with reposed governance arrangements for the mayoral combined county authority? And wrote back, Hampshire County Council supports the governance. So yes, it's created a theoretical risk. And in practice, given the level of funding, it's a very theoretical risk. But that, in the end, is down to a decision on an approach that this council decided to take. And it shouldn't be something where the residents of Hampshire and the Isle of Wight, who stand to benefit from the new mayoralty, have to pay the price. Maybe, in fact, we should have a bit of reflection about why we fed back as we did and why we took the approach that we did, rather than complaining about a situation that we consciously signed up to. The second thing reflects something that's going to have to change about this authority, which is the work that's already underway to build relationships with our neighbours is going to have to continue and it's going to have to strengthen. The hard reality of the emerging situation is that this council is going to need a better relationship with its nagers, neighbours, more collaborative and more respectful. We have signed up to governance, which means we cannot push people around. So for Hampshire to get majority support for any position, it is going to need one or more of the other authorities to vote with them on an issue. It's not, it's not possible to get anything through in any other way. It is in a few circumstances, but generally not. And might I suggest that the start point of a respectful relationship is not to treat them as financial lunatics who want to spend like drunken sailors. Obviously, as the main ports for the region, they do have more sailors than we do. But on a serious note, none of the constituent councils have got themselves into the same financial mess that we're in. None of them wants to be in that situation. I think if we start with the assumption that they won't want to put their budgets under pressure, that they have competent and professional Section 151 officers, responsible leadership, then we will be in a better place in terms of how we have that discussion going forward. So I'd suggest a bit more diplomacy and a bit less trying to push people around. I'd build on the point that councillor Adam King, Adams King made about trusting the voters and the choice that they made and the constraint that that puts on the situation. There are over a million voters in Hampshire. There are about just over 400,000 in all the unitaries added together. All of the declared candidates, as far as I'm aware, know how to count. And nobody who is going to be mayor, is going to be mayor, who doesn't take the needs of our residents here in Hampshire seriously and their finances seriously, particularly when so many are still living with the cost of living crisis that began under the last government. And no mayor who wants supportive councils after reorganization and the shadow elections is going to be able to function if they don't take the needs of their residents seriously. Ultimately, the combined authority that we all, almost all backed back in March means that this authority is going to have to change and keep changing. That, in the end, is the tension that's in this paper. It wants a world where the county doesn't have to change. But I suggest we seize that opportunity, we don't fight it. Let's not forget the size of the prize. Not just the thirty-year fund, but the other sources of bids and grants and funding which we can't currently access and what can be done with it for the residents of Hampshire and the Isle of Wight. All the improvements that can be made on transport, health, cost of living and the environment.
You've reached your time, councillor.
Thank you very much. There's a huge opportunity. It will be bigger if we work constructively. So please, more focus on that.
Can you stop, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? I see no one in the room or on the screen. In which case then, that brings the debate to an end. Leader, do you have a response to the debate you've heard so far?
I'll respond to the personal debate that councillor Todd and I have. As a consequence of those comments, so I think there are a couple of things there that I would just like us to reflect upon. First of all, yes, we did go into this with our eyes open, but we also knew that there would be a point at which we were able to influence how the governance worked and what happened in terms of, of how that money was undertaken. And with the greatest respect, I don't accept the point that the other councils are in a lesser financial mess than us or that we have got ourselves into it. The fact remains that we are as yet not looking at exceptional financial support, whereas Southampton have been. We do not have hundreds of millions of pounds' worth of debt. Portsmouth do. Now, that's debt for good reason, but it doesn't mean that we are in any lesser or greater financial situation than the other three authorities. We all have our challenges around various areas. And absolutely, we need to be more collaborative and more collegiate, which is exactly what we've been in order to get us to this place. I'd remind councillor Todd that this is the eighth attempt at getting this over the line. Eight previous attempts with members from, with leaders from various parties across the county and the unitaries have failed. We, leaders from each of the four different groups represented here, Labour, Lib Dem, independent and conservative, managed to do it. That doesn't happen unless we're collegiate and collaborative, nor that, if we're not, nor does it happen if we don't act in an entirely professional way nor our officers in doing so as well. So that's where we are. We have the prize. It is going to bring powers and additional funding to our area that will benefit all of us. And if we are all no longer here, either next June or in two years' time, we will, by agreeing this, have a legacy that we, as a council, have left the people of Hampshire and the Solent and the Isle of Wight to, for the future, and we should be proud of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, thank you, Leader. Now, you'll see that you've got the recommendations which are on page four and five. And that's what you're voting on. And can you use your voting button to, to vote? Not a recorded vote. Okay, so we can either do it by acclamation or by hands. All those in favor? That's the vast majority. Anyone against? Any extensions? That's clearly carried. Thank you very much, it saves a lot of time. Then moving on to the next item, which is item five, which is the English Devolution White Paper, Local Government Reorganization. And that's on pages sixty-five through to seven hundred and forty. All I'm going to do here is to propose a variation to standing orders for item twelve to adjust the length of the speakers, speeches. So you can have speeches which are based upon the budget length. That's all right with members? I would like to read out the following. Members, as for the previous debates on matters related to local government reorganization, I propose to vary the standing orders for the item to adjust the time allowed for speeches in line with the budget debate sequence, which has been circulated to you all by email. So that's the formal presentation. Do you agree with that, please? Agree with that, unanimous, I think. Right, we then move on to invite the chairman to present the report as in item one below. Leader, to present the report. Yes, that's what I said, yeah. Oh, did I? Oh, beg his pardon. Getting, getting beyond myself. Leader, would you kindly present the report? I apologize to you.
No, I thought I dodged a bullet there for a minute.
No such luck.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. I don't intend speaking for very long about this. We obviously had a good debate on the seventeenth of July and Cabinet agreed that we would proceed with the proposal that is before you on the eighteenth of July, a time meeting then. In the meantime, we have carried out an engagement that has engaged with over 5,000 individuals and stakeholders and partners. That has given us food for thought. It has also given us some very clear advice from particularly those who work with us most around how the new council structures might work and how they can work best. I've been very clear from day one. There is no right answer to this. In an ideal world, we would not be here. In an ideal world, we would be talking about far more important things and the concentration that we have had over the last few months and certainly the last couple of months on this subject would not have been as great and it would have meant that we would have concentrated upon other things. But in the process of talking about local government reorganization, we have, I feel, put together a really strong proposal. It is well evidenced. It goes through all of the points that I felt we should be focusing upon most. It looks at the ways in which we can ensure that the new councils that are created have the best opportunity to succeed, that they remain as financially resilient as they possibly can, that they still have a link to their local communities and that they represent those communities in the best possible way. And the work that we have done as a, as a council and most importantly, the work that our staff have done over the summer to ensure that those ideas are fleshed out is before you in the bid that we are talking about today and has taken an incredible amount of work, has been carried out with enormous professionalism. I have been receiving messages from, from Emma and Gary late into the evening as they've worked on various parts of this proposal along with their teams. And we owe them an enormous debt of gratitude for the amount of work that has gone into this. Because whether you agree with it or not, it is a really well-evidenced and full piece of work that explains why we think this is the right answer. And I've equally been clear, other people have different views and their views are not wrong. They are just different and they have a different focus. And it is for them to scrutinize those, not for us. So we are where we are. I would commend this to you. One of the main pieces that I would really like you to look at is the piece of work that's been done around community engagement because that issue of place is one of the things that has been of greatest concern to many people. And we spent a whole day talking to parish and town councils, not just from Hampshire but also from the Isle of Wight, on the seventh of August. And that gave us some excellent feedback around how we can ensure that the community governance model that is asked of us by government can make sure that people still feel connected to the councils that are created despite the size that they are going to be. So all of that work has been put together in this paper. I would remind you that we've agreed the outline. This is the detail now. Very happy to take questions, Mr. Chairman, and equally very happy to answer any points in debate as people would like to make their, their cases. Big piece of work, lots to read. And I recognize that there still remain a number of questions that we would all like to have answered as we go through and hopefully as we go through the next few months and, and the timeline that takes us to the government making a decision in March, we will be able to do that. The final thing to say is, remember... The final thing to say is, remember, this is our proposal. This is our best proposal. We're not making the decision, though. That decision gets made in Westminster and in Whitehall over the next few months. I know many of us feel that if we were to do this, we would want to do it in a very different way, but we have stuck with the criteria that the government gave us, because not to do so would mean that whatever proposal we put forward would not be considered by them. And making sure that our proposal is considered in such a way that it is workable within the government's criteria is an equally important part. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I'll now ask for any questions from members. Can I remind you, please, that there are questions only and not debate at this stage? Are there any questions to the leader from members? No, I see none. In which case then I'll call upon the councillor Keith House to respond.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sure we all, when we got out of bed this morning, thought, yippee, we've got another debate on local government reorganisation, and that motivated us, inspired us to come along this morning, probably about the same level as if someone had said, would you like to join my new WhatsApp group? It's that kind of level, isn't it, where you feel like it's déjà vu, you've been here before? Actually, I did feel like I'd been here before, but a time travel. Stephen Reid's in the Cabinet.
Congratulations, Stephen.
So there we are. We proved time travel does exist, not just by visiting the Isle of Wight. So we are, we are where we are with this one, and we've heard most of the debate before, and you'll all be delighted to know that I'm not going to repeat everything I said before, in the same way that Nick didn't repeat everything he said before. But I do think it's important that we do pause a little bit as we come to this decision. And I very much took the, took the, took the words with thought that came from councillor Todd, I almost called him Mayor Martin then, about owning our decisions that we've taken in the past and thinking them through, where that follows us on through to. Because, for example, on devolution, Nick is absolutely right to say we failed time and time again to achieve devolution. But actually, we got very close to it last time round, but we lost our nerve, or the leadership of the council lost its nerve right at the last minute, in the last few days, because every other council had signed up to it, at least in theory, last time round. And then the leader said, oh, can't do that, because they weren't convinced about the governance arrangements, they weren't prepared to take the risk. And sometimes we do, I think, over-egg risk, to the point of being overly cautious in a lot of what we do here, and we lose out. And if councillor Kendall's not here, is he? No. If councillor Kendall was here, he'd be delighted to hear me yet again say we lost out on things like feeding tariffs, on climate change, because we weren't prepared to take a modest risk. And I think the devolution debate is that level of modest risk. For all the reasons that Martin said, the real risk is quite small. So let's have some confidence in some of those things and embrace change and embrace the way things have to be. We can't quite control our destiny. But the role of the opposition leader sometimes is to do the awkward job of holding truth to power, particularly where decisions are being made. We get a lot of decisions right in this council chamber. We've got some, we've got some good councillors across the floor. We've got some fantastic staff across the floor. We don't always get it right. Sometimes we get it wrong. And sometimes we're not prepared to accept that we could have done things a bit differently. My fundamental belief is this is one of those occasions where we could have gone down a different route, and we could have come up with a different set of conclusions. And I think the important thing there is to drill down into what we're really trying to achieve, and that is local government. The future of. Two key words are local and government. We have paid very little attention to the word local as we progress the county council's approach. Let's just even start with the names. Take something fairly trivial in the round. Let's start with the names. Because names matter. You know, in the nineteenth century, we'd have had the chairman of the county council. In the late twentieth century, we, most of the places, would have had the chair of the county council. In America, we might just say, hey, it's Mark. I tend to go with councillor Cooper or Mark, depending on the format. Names matter for a variety of reasons. So the fact that we've struggled to come up with names for these new organisations actually says something quite telling, I think, about the proposal that we're putting forward. South East Hampshire, that's easy. You know, everyone's pretty well agreed on South East Hampshire. Not quite everyone. All due respect to my colleague behind me, and the dagger's not gone in the back. Most of us have broadly agreed on South East Hampshire, or you might even want to call it Greater Portsmouth. Probably not, actually, but let's see. That's the point, you see. That's the point. Names, Greater Gospel, thank you. Names matter. They really do. So we've got that one sort of sorted. What about the other two? Well, there's West Hampshire. West Hampshire, that's an interesting concept, isn't it? I don't think I've ever heard West Hampshire. It's not been in my lexicon over the years. Yeah, the New Forest is in West Hampshire. Tees Valley is in West Hampshire. Southampton? Southampton defines itself as south central. It's the point where the south-west and the south-east come together. Southampton is a different place. It really is. And certainly, I wouldn't say that my home was in West Hampshire. Geographically, it certainly isn't. Philosophically, it isn't. In terms of travels to work and all the rest of it, it isn't in West Hampshire. Yet we're saying that all those areas are West Hampshire. What about the other one? Mid-north, north mid, whatever. Total confusion about what this new thing should be called. And that's the whole point, isn't it? It isn't a place. Mid-North Hampshire is Roland's Castle and Horndean, is it? I really don't think so. That really is a stretch. But even if we look at the West Hampshire thing, let's take Andover as an example. How many Andover councillors are there today? One. Oh, the other two, two, okay, but yeah, the other two didn't make it, did they? Because they really thought that it wasn't a good place to be today, or they were ill. Telling the number of seats that are empty this morning, isn't it, on a key vote like this? I don't believe it was through the Lib Dem conference. I don't think most of them were at the Lib Dem conference yesterday. I think, they might have wanted to be because the alternative was Reform, wasn't it? Maybe that's, maybe that's the future. But take Andover as a good example. Where does it sit? Is its critical relationship with Southampton? I wonder. I don't think it is. I suspect that Andover's critical relationships are with its immediate hinterland, its villages. It's maybe even with Basingstoke for some purposes. It might be Winchester for quite a lot of purposes. Could even be the areas to the north around Newbury. But it certainly isn't Southampton, Eastleigh and New Milton. That just doesn't fit in any real sense. So names matter, and I would suggest that if we can't even find reasonable names for these new creations, then something has gone wrong along the way. We haven't managed to get the local bit to work at all. And it was thinking about some of these geographies that really got me thinking about why? Why? Why has Hampshire come up with this model? And we've heard some of the bits in the debate before, and then finally, finally, the penny finally dropped with me that actually, the core rationale behind the county council's proposal is not about local, in quotes, government at all. It's about finding a mechanism to continue Hampshire County Council on a smaller footprint. And the Basingstoke, Hart, Rushmore, Winchester, East Hampshire combination is about giving Hampshire County Council the one option to be a continuing authority on a smaller footprint, accepting that the southeast has been sorted out, regardless of the views of my learned friend, but throwing Test Valley and New Forest and Eastleigh out with the Bathwater to get that continuing authority and a shrunken county council that still exists feels like the only real rationale for the proposal that's in front of this council today. Because nothing else adds up. The geography doesn't add up, the locality doesn't add up. And if you try and go through the government's tests of what we were asked to do, which include things like roughly equal-sized unitary authorities, take it the Isle of Wight as a genuine exception, roughly equal-sized unitary authorities, roughly around the 500,000 population mark, give a bit above, give a bit below, but not violently away from 500,000, not the 700-plus thousands we've got here for two of these, two of these local authorities. We were asked to think about balancing these authorities so they work well in the American mind's authority. It's a version of the conversation that Nick led us through this morning on devolution, about balance and weight between different component parts. Yet we're actually saying, we want to do the opposite here on this. So we failed that government test. Government talks about natural areas for economic growth and prosperity around units that fit on those models. Well, West Hampshire doesn't really work on that basis, and certainly mid-north, whatever it is, Hampshire, that's the continuing authority, doesn't really work on that basis. So I think we've got that wrong. And we were told last time round that there was an argument that, well, we needed to make sure that each of these new councils was an existing upper-tier council. Because we needed to make sure that all of them were continuing adult services councils. And that was kind of like a, oh, shibboleth. It's kind of like, oh, it's a Farage-type statement, a Trump-type statement about fear, gloom and doom, because it can't be done any other way, can it? Well, actually, it can be. If we look at some of the most recent local government reorganisations, Cymru is a good example, very recent. One of those authorities, brand new, upper-tier authority in terms of adult social care. If we look at what happened with Berkshire after 1997, when Berkshire was Balkanised and the county council was abolished, and each of the quite small districts were created as unitary authorities. And by the way, they have more or less survived over the course of the period. Have we seen, have we seen traumas in Windsor? Well, other than the Royal Family, I don't think we have. Have we seen chaos in Newbury? No, we haven't. Have we seen, we've seen some problems in Slough on finance, but nothing to do with adult social care, really. It's around the difficulty of governance in that place. So all of these Trump-like scares on adult social care, it's a bit like Trump with paracetamol, Tylenol, it's a fiction. It's not a reality, but it's there to scare you into thinking differently. colleagues, no one seriously thinks that Roland's Castle and Yeatley are natural fits as one bit of local government. And yet that's the proposal here. I don't really think that anyone seriously thinks that Hamball and New Milton and Andover are natural fits for one local authority. They might be part of a strategic authority, like Hampshire is now. I've always said here that Hampshire is at its best when it does the strategic stuff and does it well, because it is more like regional government in most parts of Western Europe. We're not, in that sense, as a county council, really a local authority. So we are where we are. My conclusion, from where this has got to, and I totally respect the point that Nick makes about we come to different conclusions as we enter this debate, because we come at it from different perspectives, with different rationales. My conclusion is that the proposal that's in front of us today is not fit for purpose. It doesn't meet the government's tests. And I think there's even a danger that if we put it forward as a county council, we are likely to get less respect from central government, because it doesn't meet the government's tests in so many ways. And we'd actually be better off not putting forward a proposal ourselves as a county council than putting this proposal forward, because it isn't fit for purpose. On the table, there are already at least three other models, which have the support, or at least not the dissent, of the vast majority of the other councils across Hampshire and the Isle of Wight. So it's not as if there isn't choice there that hasn't been worked through carefully. And I'm not going to get into the arguments backwards and forwards about money, because the business cases are a fiction from both sides of this argument. They're not really about what any future new shadow authority will put in place, or any long-term authority will put in place, because those elected members do not exist yet. They will do something different, because that's the benefit of their place to come to those conclusions. The models we've got here are only a business case to say to government that something might work or might not. So that is my conclusion, Chairman. Mark, councillor Cooper, whatever name we choose to use, we could have done this in a different way, and I think reached a conclusion that had more councillors present in the room today and prepared to take part in the vote rather than staying at home. That's why I'll be voting against this package today. Thank you.
Right, thank you. There's no amendments, so I'll move on then to invite the leader of the independent group, councillor Andy Tree, to respond to the proposals.
Chairman, that's better. So this is fairly short, as much of the argument and debate has already happened previously, and I won't repeat my previous statement. For any public watching, it is important to note as always that we are a group of independents, not a political party, with individual views, me being a member of the White Hill and Borden Community Party, councillors Parker Jones and Pankhurst being independent, and councillor Wallace being the sole Green member of this council. And my colleagues may present their own views during the debate. I don't get a second opportunity to speak, so I will give my personal views within this statement. Firstly, I want to thank officers of both Hampshire County Council and East Hampshire District Council for all their work, disclosing again for the record my interest as deputy leader of East Hampshire District Council in the coalition administration there. Gary, Emma, Andy, the CFO, and others deserve our thanks for the effort that's been put in to this very difficult task. Speaking from my county council role, I believe the partnership with East Hampshire District Council has been incredibly useful here to enable a district perspective to be heard when formulating the proposals. I also want to acknowledge the huge amount of work that's been put in by the political leadership under councillor Adams King, so thank you, Nick. And also note that the leaders of districts and boroughs across Hampshire and the Solent have also spent vast amounts of time on LGR in what has evoked strong views on different sides of the argument. I do respect others' differing views, including the double-hatter district and borough leaders in this room, and have always been willing to listen with an open mind. Nobody gave us a blank canvas to come up with a plan, and being asked to justify any deviation, such as 500,000 population or boundary changes, without being given any red lines by government or significant guidance, has left this open to interpretation, and obviously, people will interpret differently. As I've said before, I believe my fellow residents across White Hill, Borden and Limford want strong, state-financially-stable councils that charge fair council tax to deliver value-for-money services and that have ultimate democratic oversight. As I've said before, it's that simple. Keep our children and vulnerable people safe, fix potholes, empty the bins and govern responsibly. I'm aligned with the position of the leader and the administration on this matter in terms of having done our best to create a plan that follows the evidence as best we can and deliver a plan that meets the government criteria. There is no perfect outcome. Even the current boundaries of some of our districts are arbitrary, and there will always be some sitting in the middle of a council area and some on the boundary. I understand that Hampshire County Council and East Hampshire District Council are the only councils proposing a four-unitary model with three on the mainland plus Isle of Wight. Having read the detail in the work completed by our officers, I am convinced this model should go to government for consideration, fully respecting the right of other councils to submit their own proposals. We have a responsibility as best we can to protect what we do well, such as our excellent rate of children's services. A failure here would be catastrophic, and it's extremely important to get right referencing terminology such as Greenfield and Brownfield. Assuming the financial arrangements for this plan are accepted, I appreciate concerns over democracy in large councils, and I want to address that positively. Councillor House emphasised that this is supposed to be local government, and I agree with that sentiment. So how do we ensure that those we serve remain connected and that councillors themselves can contribute? I refer to paragraphs twenty and twenty-one in the Cabinet report, which I find extremely reassuring, subject to what actually follows. Without intending any offence, Hampshire County Council is very centralised in its strategic decision-making, e.g. cabinet-level, without any local area committees or delegation more locally. I do appreciate the services sometimes delivered locally, and there's decisions on the ground, but from a strategic level, backbench councillors are not part of the ultimate decision-making, which is predominantly cabinet and executive member. We can change this. We can have a large council where, under the neighbourhood ideas, where you could have area committees, local decision-making to a more local executive member, and we could also utilise the town and parish level. Parish-level councils massively vary in terms of power of competence, size, capability, and some areas are amparished, but I have no doubt that many are ready to play key roles in their community. And so I would say perhaps we will have our cake and eat it. Larger, stable councils with true democracy embedded with the neighbourhood plans that are implemented. So I will listen to the debate and views of others, but I plan to support the recommendations. I hope these plans and any plans submitted from any other authority receive proper scrutiny at government level before the receive proper scrutiny at government level before the final decision is made. I hope the public, when the government go out to consultation, will respond to whatever the government puts out. And it's also just worth noting, of course, that regardless of the plans that are put in, the government could decide to do something different or amend entirely. So ultimately, whatever we submit, we are in the hands of the government. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tree. I now call upon the leader of the Labour Group, councillor Kim Taylor, to respond to the proposals.
Thank you, chairman, and leader and members. I'd like to start, if I can, by just also offering my congratulations to councillor Stephen Reid for his appointment. And an immediate apology, because I shall definitely be bending his ear about health and welfare in Basingstoke, and I'm sure he's expecting that. And I'd like to join my voice with others to thank all the officers of both councils for their hard work and the political leadership whilst continuing to meet the challenges of day-to-day business and also the additional burden of devolution planning. When I was thinking about what to say today, I had to remind myself that this meeting was not about reconsidering the options, as we have already made that decision. And so you'll be pleased to hear, there will be no sedge way of any kind, whether that's branding, naming, or anything to doing that. Nor is this meeting about making comparisons with other submissions from other councils, who are perfectly entitled to do that. If it were, I'd be here for quite some time. What I would just say about that is that I am disappointed to see that we have had to write letters to some of our colleagues. And I am deeply saddened and disappointed that that was necessary. What we are here to do today is to endorse, or not, our strategic business case developed between ourselves and our partners, East Hampshire District Council, for LGR, and to agree to its submission. And in that respect, I would say, what we are not here to do as a council is to chase novelty or take unnecessary risks. We are here to make the case for a model that's sensible, deliverable, and designed to protect services that residents rely on most. And my view is that this is a proposal which is grounded, deliverable, and contrary to councillor House's comments, I believe it is aligned with government expectations. It is a careful and considered step forward, and one that builds on a track record of delivering complex services, and also the need to bring decision-making closer to communities. I think it does reflect the best of both worlds, scale where it matters, and local voice where it counts. And importantly, an acknowledgement of the challenges ahead. We know what works, and we also know what's at risk if we get this wrong. We know that services like adult social care and children's safeguarding can't be delivered effectively without scale, expertise, and professional oversight. And I think that our proposal reflects that reality. It doesn't overpromise, it doesn't underestimate the complexity of transition, and importantly, it's not gambling with the future of our vulnerable residents. The financials have been assessed with rigor, and we've tested the geography with pixel-level precision. We have communicated and consulted with residents and our strategic partners. I would like to acknowledge the significant improvements that have been made in respect of localism and governance as a result of feedback given by members. And the inclusion of council-led area committees in line with the Devolution and Communities Empowerment Bill is welcomed and should ensure new unitaries benefit from strategic scale whilst embedding local voice and accountability. I especially like the idea of our partners in East Hampshire undertaking pilot area committees, and this will inform our future thinking further. And the thinking of all new unitaries. Another important addition is the proposal's sensible approach to transition. Reform of this scale cannot be left to chance or rushed through last minute. And I think the plan recognises that we have to all, and that's all authorities within Hampshire and Isle of Wight, must start preparing now, working together, engaging with staff, mapping systems, and building the foundations for continuity and improvement. Without a doubt, this proposal is not the most radical, but I think it is the most realistic. It doesn't overpromise, and it doesn't underestimate the complexity of transition. It doesn't gamble with the future of services or the frontline teams who deliver them. We do have a duty to lead with clarity and to submit a proposal that the government can trust and will serve residents well, and that could be implemented without disruption or delay. The proposal is realistic, compliant, and ready to meet the needs of government, ready to protect frontline services, and ready to deliver the reform that works for residents. If I had to make a suggestion about improvement, it would simply be about adding perhaps some examples of how outcomes could be improved by new unitaries. But that's a small and minor issue. However, I will be supporting the submission of the proposal, and I would urge other members to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. I don't have any further speakers to call on, so what I'll do now is go into general debate. And each speaker can speak for four minutes in general debate. I have a number on the screen already, and the first name on the list is councillor Glenn, please.
Thank you very much, chairman. And may I add my congratulations to Stephen Reid for his worthy return to cabinet. I'd like to, first of all, start by thanking our officers for the time put in to get us to this point. And that's just a summary, a quick summary of the amount of work it must have taken. I'd like to thank you, leader, for your determination to get us to this point. And I imagine you've had to wake up in the morning and go to bed at night thinking about this all the time. It's a job that not many of us would have wanted, and frankly, not many of us would have done it as well as you have. I also like to thank all the councillors here for their hard work and for their integrity, for all the hours they put in to look at copious agendas, which does take up a huge amount of time with all the interruptions that we have in normal family life. I'm standing just to say that I support the recommendations. That will not come as a surprise, in spite of fighting against this for the last 15 to 20 years. So this is the compromise that an awful lot of us are having to make because of the conditions that we have to deal with at this present time. I expect that whatever the Secretary of State comes up with, the answer will just be the tip of an iceberg that will continue to float for many years to come. What is important, and this is why we are doing what we are doing now, is that we remain in control of our future. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Can I call on councillor Heron, please?
Chairman, thank you. And I'm just going to start by echoing my thanks to the leader, cabinet, and all the officers for bringing this proposal forward. I say that because I cannot possibly support it. In my 17 years in local government, I have rarely come to the point where I've had to balance what my residents want, what my residents expect me to say, with a situation like this, where I recognise that what is being put forward is necessary, important. We need to put something forward that we feel best meets the government's criteria. May I say, a government that speaks of localism but is delivering something here that not a single one of my residents has ever asked for, this is not localism. This is trying to force a model into a criteria set by Whitehall from the rump of a government that is already failing in the face of a party that's coming up that will pledge to reverse this. So, yeah, I think if we do end up with a reformed government and the way this Labour government is going, I think we're going to, much to my charade, that we're going to be back here again very soon. But at the end of it, leader, I cannot vote for something that ties my district of New Forest with Southampton, something that is absolutely opposed by those residents I represent. And equally, chairman, as much as I have worked many times with councillor House in Eastleigh, the residents of my area have nothing in common with Eastleigh. This is a construct trying to meet a government criteria necessarily. And I do say that, leader, I accept that this is a necessary construct. But let none of us kid ourselves here. We are not doing what we want. We are not doing what our residents want. We are merely trying to meet the best requirements we can from a government minister who has no interest in our country, no interest in our people, and no interest in helping us deliver the services our residents need.
Councillor Heron, thank you. Can I call on councillor Briggs, please?
Thank you, chairman. I'm from the South East, which I think, out of all the proposals, have come off the worst. Yes, we are proud of our mayoral time heritage. I grew up in Portsmouth, I've lived in Gosport, I live in Haven. We're an area of great deprivation. Land, it says where I have to build on brownfield sites. Well, Portsmouth, Gosport, Haven, Farham, we haven't got many brownfield sites left. So I feel greatly for my area. But I am going to support the motion because I think the rest of Hampshire comes out well out of this. We're being forced to do this by a Labour government, which I don't support at all. But the councils have done their best. And I've looked at other areas, and everyone comes up with the Portsmouth, Haven, Gosport, Farham. We're not given any choice in it. So even though I greatly fear for my area, because how much is the government going to give us to support our needs? We don't know. We've been forced to do this at speed, and everything you read is unknown. What is going to happen? They don't know. How many changes will the Labour government make in their cabinet? Again, we don't know. They'll all have different ideas. So with great reluctance, I will support. And as I said before, it's better for the rest of Hampshire, but not for the South East. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Briggs. I call on councillor Manns, please.
Chairman, councillors, first of all, I'd like to say what an excellent, thorough job under the new leadership of Gary Westbrook the councillors done in preparing the matters that we're discussing this morning. Having said that, you will also be pleased to hear that I'm not simply going to repeat the arguments I used last time round for a full Hampshire County Council unitary. I accept that it's very unlikely the government would accept that. But nonetheless, I still have the view that we should ensure that the government realises the cost-saving of going down that particular route. But what I would ask the leader to do is to ensure that when we submit this submission to the government, we also write a covering note explaining how we believe there are other ways of dealing with this particular issue which would actually save money, and through saving money, provide council taxpayers with better services. Since we last met, we have had the district council proposals. I'll call it that because most of the districts have gone down a different route. And I think we should just bear in mind what will happen next and what the government ministers and their advisers will do with two very different solutions to this county's unitary status in the future. So what I would ask is that in any covering note the leader may send with this proposal, he actually points out that there is a solution that brings our two proposals closer together. And that is including Test Valley and New Forest in what I think we call mid-Hampshire. I rather agree with the leader of the Liberal Democrats. The names are not something that we would wish on anybody. However, what I do believe is by having a council, a unitary authority, with under a million, but quite close to a million, we will provide the best possible services in terms of social care and children's services that we possibly can. And what worries me most about the solution we have in front of us is that we have outstanding educational services. And I think those might be under threat by not ensuring that we have a largest possible unitary authority in Hampshire. So all I'd ask the leader to do is to actually ensure that the government realises that there are other solutions of the sort that I've mentioned with one very large unitary, which provide the most savings, cost the least, and provide what I would regard as first-class services that we have in terms of social services, education, and safeguarding. And if he's prepared to do that, I will certainly support the proposal this morning. But if not, I will certainly not be able to support them.
Thank you, councillor Manns. I'll call upon councillor Branson, please.
Thank you, chairman. I will be supporting the recommendation, not because I have any enthusiasm for it, but I do believe it is the best proposal on offer. Of all the proposals from both Hampshire and the other councils, the proposals for Haven, where I represent, is the same for almost all of them. However, there are a few anomalies that do concern me. Firstly, in my division, North East Haven, Barnes Road used to be the edge of the borough, with Haven Thicket Woodland on the northern side. Firstly, they built the Bupa Hospital, Now Spire. And when I was mayor of Haven in 2009, I visited the hospital in my full mayoral chain, only to discover later that a small part of the drive is in Haven, but the main hospital is in East Hampshire. It's a similar situation with the Oaks Haven crematorium, sadly, which many of us have visited. The actual crematorium is not in the borough of Haven. When I was canvassing a small new development at the last Hampshire election, I discovered that the border cuts Harrison Road in half. Numbers 2 to 26 are in Haven, and 28 to 38 are in East Hampshire. There is one semi-detached house in one half in Haven and the other in East Hampshire. In fact, I understand that the actual border actually goes through their living room. Despite the rubbish being collected by the same company, it was collected on different days, and glass bottles were only collected in one half. There are now further large-scale developments being built in the north of Barnes Road, and they really are part of Haven. I understand the residents of Roland's Castle do not want to be part of Haven, but I am sure they are much more likely to shop at Marks and Spencer's in the town than anywhere in New Milton, as is proposed by some of the other authorities. There is building on all of Haven's land borders. And it would make sense if at some time in the future these were part of the same unitary authority. The New Haven Thicket Reservoir is across the Haven and East Hampshire authorities' boundaries. And when it comes to some of the planning issues, it has to go to both planning committees, which has caused some real problems in the past and will continue to do so. It's a bit of a bureaucratic nightmare. Another concern that has been voiced by the head teachers of the local authority secondary schools in the Haven Federation. They mostly serve areas of multiple deprivation, but perform well above targets. Most of them are still brilliantly supported by Hampshire, and many of them have gone from required improvements to good and even elements of outstanding. The head teachers are very concerned that they will be forced into being part of an academy chain, and the ethos of the individual schools will be lost. The schools of which I am the chairman of governors has a current waiting list for this school year of over 130, and has an attendance school above the Hampshire and national average. This compares to a local academy school where the number of first choices was below 50. I believe there really are concerns. I believe there really are concerns of the financial viability of Portsmouth, Gosport, Farham and Havant, and trust that the governments take note of this if they are determined to force this upon us. There is certainly no enthusiasm among our residents for this, and even apparently from the number of local councillors. Reluctantly, I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, councillor Branson. I call on councillor Carpenter, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This is another view from a New Forest councillor. There are many good reasons why we need unitary councils, in my opinion, across Hampshire, and they are all written very clearly in the county report. But one local one to me is that the whole of the New Forest will fall in the same council, and I think that will be a very good thing for the New Forest. Another good reason, sometimes overlooked, is that our residents will have a one-stop-shop to go to for their queries, and I think that will be a huge benefit for residents, and I think we really have to look at that. I have to say, I'm going to say it today, I have never read or heard such venomous comments from some of our district and borough councils towards the county. It has almost amounted to bullying, in some cases, of the county council, which I hold in very high regard. So I actually suggest another good reason for these unitaries is that the discord between tiers will be gone. Ilva just won't exist anymore. And everybody, hopefully, will be singing from the same hymn sheet, and I think that will be an absolute benefit for our area and for our residents. It became very clear to me long ago that we can't remain as we are. Clear advice and reasons have been put in our Hampshire report for our proposed model of reorganisation. Our model makes much more sense than any of the others I've read. I fully believe that, I've read all of them. So I'm going to be very positive about our proposal from Hampshire County Council. Let's get on with it, and all of us, let's make the best of it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carpenter. I call on councillor Henderson, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I will be very brief, but I again would like to thank the leader, the officers. They really have put huge amount of effort into explaining the model to us, and I'm hugely grateful because it's a very difficult decision to make. The one area I have to mention is children's services. We have outstanding children's services, and everyone in this chamber is a corporate parent, and we have a duty to our children to put forward the model that best supports this service. And I fear that over-fragmentation would be detrimental to this. So I am supporting the recommendation, and I would just like to thank all of the officers and Cabinet for all their work in explaining all the finer details. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. Councillor Porter, please.
Thank you very much indeed. A great deal of emphasis has been placed today on the very successful services of Hampshire County Council, and you speak as a Greenfield authority as being a real disadvantage in this paper. And I think it's an advantage, it's an opportunity to deliver new services from them, as they do for the services they already run successfully in their own districts. So I think it's easier for you to split three, not four, authorities on the mainland, but not for the welcoming authorities. I think it's a great opportunity for them. It gives the opportunities for officers, who are all in the majority extremely good at Hampshire County Council, the opportunity to take their roles in those new authorities and deliver those services with their own initiative, which I don't think they've really had the opportunity to do in the last few years. Hampshire lauds its excellent rating in children's services and adult services, but do residents really see Hampshire County Council as a local government? At the moment, they don't. They come to us as councillors, our workload is high because it doesn't function particularly well. And a lot of people are happy, but an awful lot of people aren't. So today, this very morning, I received notice that a blue badge for someone who has left it to the last time because she didn't think that she was really likely to get one, but she will be getting one, takes sixteen weeks. She won't get it till after Christmas, probably, I've been told. Two young people with different needs, both since birth, they've known about their needs since birth, and they've been noted by this council since birth. They're just going to college this term, and even as they go to college, those needs are not being addressed fully. Their children are in a state of panic because even on the night before they started college, they didn't know how they were going to get there the next morning. So is that really a good, successful service? Parents are struggling to get their children full education during a GCSE year. They know those children need that full education, and they end up taking a complaint form back to the county council in attempt to do it. Developers are struggling to get answers from Hampshire County Council Highways Department so they can actually deliver the housing that they are worried that they're committed to deliver affordable housing so people can move in before Christmas, and they aren't getting in because the county council has been slow in their response. So a great deal of emphasis as well has been placed on the response from the constabulary, actually, in this paper. We know that it has the same political function as the county council, and this function may well be removed and placed within the mayoralty. So actually, I'm not sure whether the constabulary has really much to say, but I was looking for the response from the ICBs, the two ICBs. We already have this challenge on the ICB of having two, but actually, when I search function, I look in all of them, all I find is the response back from social services about how difficult it's going to be if there are more than one, or if the ICBs remains, they are, and how difficult it is to manage with the hospitals, not from the hospitals' back, who have been managing this for absolutely years already. They know how to do this. So I don't think that actually the paper does argue the best. I don't think in the consultation, it did give you the alternative of saying none of the above either. It just gave you the alternative as the ones that were placed there. So I think actually there was a gap in the consultation process. It was extremely well explained by councillor Adams King on a film. It came out very well, very understanding, until you actually got to fill the form in, and then, no. So I'm afraid I'm going to be asking for a vote to be held, I'm pleased to have a recorded vote, to show that actually some of us don't think that this is the best solution.
That's your time. Thank you very much, councillor Porter. Can I ask now for councillor Parker?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like, like everybody else, to thank all our officers and the executive members for all the hard work they've put in. I'd like to thank all of us, please, because we've put in a lot of hard work. This is a seven-hundred-and-fifty-page agenda for an extraordinary council meeting. Commiserations to councillor Reed for getting it back on the Cabinet. But to the point, councillor House made one very good point about names, and the names of all these proposed unitary councils are artificial, than they are everywhere in all the other proposals, and that's nothing new. Those of us with long memories, Chairman, remember when the present constituent councils of this authority were put together north of fifty years ago. Some of the names of the authorities we represent are incredibly artificial. Let's take mine. Hart District Council, right? Hart District Council was Fleet Urban District Council, Hartley Whitney Rural District Council, whatever Yateley Council was, cobbled together in a kind of shotgun marriage and named after a dribbling stream called Hart. Rushmore, councillor Tazers Local District, is Aldershot and Farnborough. Proud towns, cobbled together as Rushmore, which is a pocky little wood somewhere in the middle. So meaningless names are not new. We're going to have them this time round, whether we like it or not, because the government's going to do whatever it wants to do to us. One of the big issues that I keep getting people arguing about is that we're putting together authorities that are too large, and it's a fair point. I think they're too large. But paragraph 4.2.3 of the original White paper made it very clear that half a million is what they were looking for. And they say, if you've got a really, really good case, you can have a bit left, and we're doing that with the Isle of Wight. But a really, really good case doesn't mean it's a bit more convenient than it might be otherwise. So I think, you know, we are where we are with that one, and that's what the government has asked for. Councillor Heron talked about what residents want, and I agreed with every word he said, right up to the conclusion. Because what my view of my duty is, is do the best I can for the residents I represent. I don't expect them to know all the ins and outs of the government, why would they? They're normal people. But they do expect me to make decisions that are in their best interests. And in their best interests, we need to put together unitary councils that work, that are financially sound, that are big enough to take on all the problems of, you know, education and social care and all that. So I'm not an enthusiast for unitarisation. There are benefits, councillor Carpenter mentioned a number of them, but there are disadvantages as well. And in many ways, mostly, Hampshire works pretty well as a two-tier area. It's unfortunate that we had the uncomfortable statements in some of the district comments, but most of the time, we work reasonably well with them. But it's going to happen. It's going to be done to us if we don't cooperate with it. And therefore, we do have to put forward our best shot at the least worst option.
Time, councillor, if you...
Thank you, Chairman. So it's going to be done to us if we don't do it ourselves. I'm going to be supporting this recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Latham, please.
Thank you, Chair. I firstly like to congratulate the officers on this voluminous report. For those of us members who have read it, all of it, I think we enjoy, we should have a pat on the back as well, frankly, because it's taken a lot of time over the last week. I know that there are differences of opinion between us in this House today, and I can see that my colleagues on this side are in favour of a four unitaries on the mainland as against the three, which is being recommended by the rest of this House. I understand that, and I understand their reasons, and their main reasons seem to be with regard to locality, and I understand their reasoning on that as well. It's a business case, and we have to consider what's in our report, and our business case is different, but it is based on what I consider to be sound financial advice, and that advice is endorsed by the accountants we employed to prepare this case. As far as I am concerned, the case for three unitaries is a strong one. I, in reading this report, was particularly impressed with the opinions of our own chief financial adviser, Mr Lowe, because his report was realistic and honest. It pulled no punches. It set us out as it is, and sets out the history, namely that this county will become unsustainable if we continue as we are. We therefore have to change. The question, therefore, is how we change, and what he identifies is that if we go to a four-unitary, that will mean that the costs of implementation would be too high, and that the running costs would never get any benefit at all. The difficulty with the four-unitary model will dilute economies of scale and unnecessarily fragment the services that we consider are most important to maintain, namely social care, send, home-school transport. All of those would be diluted by the going over to a four-unitary. I believe a new, untested and unknown unitary authority in the North would not have the capacity to deal with the type of service that we now deliver. That would be a risk, not, in particular, would be for a risk for the people who are most vulnerable. And therefore, in conclusion, I consider that we should go for the three unitaries for the benefit of Hampshire residents as a whole.
Naklitt, I'm in councillor Latham, thank you. Can I call upon councillor Parker Jones, please?
Thank you. I won't reiterate everything that's been said, but again, I wanted to thank the staff and officers and the leadership. The data that has been presented to us is comprehensive, and it is coherent. It has enabled me to ensure that I take a good decision, and that I take that decision based on the facts presented, and that I do not conflate service to place. We all love our areas, but I sit here taking decisions on behalf of people, 1.4 million of them. Where there's a unitary authority, people will have a smaller population to take those decisions on. I want to know that what comes after us, and there will be something, so let's make this the best that we can make it, from our knowledge and from our expertise, rather than having something forced upon us. I want to know that the services will continue to be outstanding. I want us to put aside the differences that led to so many different models being put forward so that we can work together because that's going to be crucial going forward. And I want to take a decision that means services are protected for my residents, and that's my residents in Bishopstoke and Fairoake, who are absolutely dear to me, but it's also my residents up in Aldershot. I'm Hampshire through and through. I've been born here, I've been bred here, my family are from here, and I want to make sure that Hampshire survives into the future. And this model gives me real hope that we will continue to provide first-class services. I'm proud of everything that people do in this room, in this chamber, and yes, we may have differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, we all want what's best for people. Surely, it's the people. The name of a place, you could call our council cheddar cheese. We would still be providing the same services. I don't want us to get bogged down in that. I want us to be upbeat and thinking, what are we going to achieve now in the future? How are we going to deliver more? Because the sad thing is that sometimes we can't deliver enough because we're not operating at enough scale anymore. The money just isn't there. So I'm definitely going to be supporting this, and I want to thank everybody for all their hard work, yeah, and I do include us members, because it has been a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker Jones. I call upon councillor Wade, please.
Thank you, Chairman. And we all know the officers have worked really hard to do this, but we're not making the decision, are we? It'll be made in London by a minister with some input from the Treasury. And we're going to have smaller authorities with less councillors, but unless money is available for social care, it'll be greater council tax. Greater taxation with less representation. Doesn't sound right, does it? But this come to decision, I thought, I'm going to talk to some of my residents. They elected me to represent them, so that's what I'm going to do. And I've talked to residents in my division. I've talked to residents across the Waterside. Nobody wants to be part of Southampton. With great respect to the city, I've talked to New Forest commoners who live in my division. I've talked to New Forest commoners who live in my division, agricultural workers, people that work in a refinery, people that work in industry, people that work across the board. All of them do not want to be part of Hampshire's option. Now, I find the role of representing my residents very important. In fact, it's the most important thing I do. And for that reason, I cannot support the Hampshire option, because it's not what the people we represent want. And that is the thing that would be paramount in what we do. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Wade, I call on councillor James, please.
Thank you chairman, unusually, I'm not gonna thank the officers for their time and hard work, that's been done enough. I actually want to thank the staff on the ground. In December 24 last year, it was announced local government reorganisation was happening, their employers were gonna change, that creates uncertainty, it creates fear, and these are the people that rely on their jobs to pay their mortgages, but they've carried on delivering amazing every day, they are our heroes, and I thank them for what they're doing over now, but also in the next couple of years whilst this disruption continues. We applaud that they have to get on and do the day job, and that means a lot. We obviously are faced with two business cases, and I think in reality, there's strong arguments to say that scale is important, there's also strong arguments to say that smaller authorities are more fleet of foot and can find efficiencies by tailoring services more to their communities. And the fact is, we don't know, and unless we want to go for a four-mainland authority solution, meet up in five years' time, we can then decide who was right and who was wrong out of PWC or KPMG. But there's also the reality, it's been alluded to already, that it doesn't matter how you slice and dice the county, it doesn't matter how you distribute those services, if government doesn't find a solution to social care, if government doesn't resolve the issue of special educational needs, all authorities, whatever their size and shape, are facing a very difficult future. And it's very frustrating for us as councillors, we get elected to make decisions and increasingly we don't have those choices. We know, having sat through Hampshire County Council, been here for nine years, and we used to sit down every year in budget preparation, decide whether to cut A, B or C, and whatever we decided the next year, we came back and decided which of the two remaining ones we'd cut. And now we're faced with, we just have to cut everything. It's a sad state of affairs, and it's very little point being a local councillor if we don't get to make choices. So I hope the government are listening to that bit, because that's not a reflection on councillor Adams King or anyone else, that's a reflection of where we are as local government. But I do enjoy local government, I've never stood for general election, I've never tried to be an MP, never want to sit in Westminster, I enjoy local, I enjoy the fact that I can shape my neighbourhood, I can influence the policies that influence my neighbourhoods. And I think because of all the other factors, it comes down to what works locally, what feels most local. Personally, I'd like to see more authorities, I'd like to see them even smaller, I think even the scale of size of authorities we're looking at in all the things I'm seeing coming forward are too large. Geographically, for a rural place like mid-Hampshire and large parts of North Hampshire, they're just too vast. So I'm bound to default to the one where I think my residents will have most control and most influence over local services, and that's not the one put forward by Hampshire County Council. Because local matters, and local takes priority, and unfortunate in the sense that I've spoken to residents, but I've also seen the survey returns from Bishopstoke and Dean's consultation, I've seen the survey responses from Hart's consultation, I've seen the survey responses from Rushmore's consultation. And in all three cases, there is a huge majority in favour of a North Hampshire without, much as I like Winchester and all its old stuff, and East Hampshire's a lovely place, but a North Hampshire without those authorities included recognise they're very different, they're places we visit and we love, but we don't want to be part of the same council, they're not local to us. So I cannot support the county's proposals, because it's not what my residents want in my ward, in my borough, or also hopefully in my future partnership boroughs, but I recognise other people have different views and respect them fully.
Thank you councillor James, call upon councillor Williams, please.
Thank you very much Chair, and I won't go into sort of the arguments that have been made already in respect to, you know, our residents not wanting this. There is one point that I wanted to pick up on, it was one of the strongest arguments being put forward, is that these larger councils minimise risk and take advantage of the economies of scale. As I said, I think we're missing a key point, we're not splitting off into separate unitaries and sailing off into the sunset never to speak again. Having four mainland unitaries does not stop councils from working together to overcome challenges. In fact, the Isle of Wight may find it essential to share services in order to deliver a balanced budget. Indeed, we already see shared services from Hampshire with other counties, Winchester and Test Valley share IT systems, East Hampshire and Winchester until a few years ago shared bin collection contracts, and Portsmouth City Council manage Havens council housing stock. So I disagree with any argument that three mainland authorities trumps four. We can share services to reduce costs on adult social care and children's services. We can think creatively and work through the challenges that any new authority will have due to the ongoing deficit, all while keeping local government local.
Right, thank you councillor Williams, councillor Dunning, please.
Thank you chairman, and again, my thanks also to the officers and staff, as usual, and obviously to Nick for all of the hard work he's done. I'm a district councillor at the New Forest District Council, and at the last vote we had in this chamber, I voted to support Hampshire County Council's proposal for option two. At that time, NFDC was still at a consultative stage and hadn't produced a complete proposal, and so I could only make a decision based on the information I had at the time. Since then, NFDC have produced a business case forming their submission to government. It is a full report, a comprehensive appraisal, including the wishes of the residents of the New Forest, and it is my duty to represent their interests today. Our local services from bin collections to libraries, social care to planning will be provided by a new council from April 28. We need to make sure that the area the new council covers is a natural fit for the New Forest District. We're fighting for a new council that recognises the unique characteristics that make up our area and design services that work for rural communities. I oppose options that split our district or threaten to make the forest a suburb of the city, governed from the urban density of Southampton. There is only one acceptable option for a new council to replace New Forest District, and that is a rural mid-Hampshire council. This option protects New Forest District residents and their needs when providing services because they are designed around the needs of a rural community. It promotes sustainable growth, balancing rural practices with education, innovation and maritime and industrial clusters, aligns careful stewardship of national parks and protected landscapes with a strengthened rural economy. It respects communities' identity by keeping the district together, maintaining people's connections with rural life. I will therefore be voting against the recommendations today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dunning, I call on councillor Crawford, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd first of all like to congratulate the officers for their, well, first of all, the leader really, and the officers, chief executive and the directors, for their very clear explanations of what this proposal benefits of participating in all the previous meetings, is that there hasn't been any doubt about the clarity with which this team has approached these things. And I think that has counted for a lot, as far as I'm concerned. I'm perhaps in the unfortunate position of being also on a borough council which is following another model. And of course, we're entitled to make one decision here and another decision at that borough council, provided we follow the proposals, believe in them. And the leader mentioned that there is no right answer, and one of the problems that we may face is that all the answers will be wrong as far as the government's concerned, and that none of the proposals that are put forward will be satisfactory as far as the government's concerned. What I liked about the proposal we had before is this, it fulfills the, one of the main criteria of the government is to stick within the current boundaries of councils. This idea that you could, in addition to reorganising local government, you can split up the current councils and then patch them all together, and it can all move forward seamlessly in two years' time, it's not very convincing, is it? And I was very struck by the fact that after the consultations that we had with members earlier in the summer, that we went back and we looked at developing the neighbourhood model, the neighbourhood empowerment model, and that, in a sense, completed the picture as far as this proposal was concerned, because we had everything before then apart from that. And when I say everything before then, I was very impressed, as I think we all have been, with the fact that all the directors and the section 151 officers fully had that professional commitment to taking this forward. And that's what I would say. The final point I would make is that, rather than us saying, well, this is our submission and this is the right submission, and then other councils saying, well, this is our submission and that's the right submission, and so on, what I would like to see is that the government, the civil servants, the ministers and their special advisers, they look at all the submissions and they take the best of all of them, because there are good points in all of the submissions. And that's what I would like to see, but in this case, what I'm saying is that I'm going to support this option, because I think it's the best that we have done, and it's been a tremendous effort. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Crawford, councillor McAvoy, please.
Thank you chairman, I'm not making any speeches, I've listened to what everybody has said, and I have three priorities. One is that the New Forest remains complete, and that seems to be met. Secondly, is ensuring that all our services to our residents continue to be expertly delivered, and I believe that will happen. And thirdly, I don't want to risk our futures to the incompetent whims of our government, so I will be supporting your policy.
Thank you councillor McAvoy, I now call upon councillor Mama Lanini.
Thank you Chair. I have listened, read and reflected for every voice telling me that reorganisation could bring efficiency and resilience. I have heard another warning of disruption, of the risk of losing local identity and the costs we may not fully see today. The evidence is not one-sided, it is complex and at times it is contradictory. What troubles me most is the wider picture. Local government has been asked to do more and more for less and less. Westminster have left councils across the country in a permanent state of uncertainty. Instead of giving us the stability and resources to plan, central government has pushed us towards structural changes as if it were a cure for the chronic underfunding. This is not a certain, this is not a decision I can take lightly, nor one I can wish, and I because cannot in all honesty say that one path is better than another path. So, I will remain abstained. Let me be clear, abstaining is not indifference, it is a call for honesty about the pressures we face and for a fair deal for Hampshire. It is a plea to central government, stop passing the buck, give local authorities the funding and the certainty we need to serve our residents with dignity and ambition. Whatever the outcome today, I stand ready to work with every colleague here to protect what matters most: strong services, thriving communication, communities and the proud identity of Hampshire. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor, I call on councillor Warwick, please.
Yes, thank you chairman, and as we've heard today, it's clear to all of us that reorganisation on this scale and on this fast-track timeframe can only succeed because of the dedication of an exceptional staff effort right across all our authorities, staff who will continue to deliver services for our residents while preparing for a significant change ahead. Our officer team here in Hampshire have ensured we have a detailed and evidence-based case in front of us, with a model that offers a balanced and a sustainable way forward. Our business case is based on today's pressures and not on historic assumptions, not on lines on maps, not on what name we might call ourselves, or what football team you might support. It is realistic and designed to deliver a model that is financially secure and operationally achievable. We know our Hampshire County Council workforce delivers services on a scale unmatched by any other authority in Hampshire. If you look at paragraph 32 in your report, it talks about IT, it talks about contracts and partnerships, and one significant example of this is the Hampshire Shared Services Partnership, a scheme you probably visit without realising every time you enter your expenses claim, or you search for your P6D, or you check your pay slip. This is the largest and most complex public sector shared service in the UK. It's delivering for more staff than Shell does, than AstraZeneca does, or Jaguar Land Rover. Our Hampshire County Council staff support more than 85,000 employees across the United Kingdom, providing HR services not only for us but for Oxfordshire County Council, for Westminster, for Hammersmith and Fulham unitaries, for Hampshire Constabulary, for the Office of the Police and Crime Commissioner, and for over 750 schools in the south of England. Our service has delivered significant savings while managing more than nine billion worth of employee and supplier payments. It shows what scale of operation our organisation is capable of, at the level of complexity, disruption and risk significant disaggregation of these services could bring. So as we enter the final decisions today around the future of local government in Hampshire, I want to again pay tribute to our staff who have worked tirelessly on these proposals and will continue to work until we have delivered local government reform as required by national government. Thank you to our new CEO Gary, to Emma and to CFO Andy and their teams, whose understanding and attention to detail on devolution and LGR has been exemplary. And to Nick, as many of you know, Nick has done more roadshows than Top Gear. He's more popular than Jeremy Clarkson, and he's managed to engage and inform and field all those tricky questions that have been fired to him from residents across the county, from Farborough to Fordham Bridge. Thank you for your skilled leadership, your time and your dedication, and for bringing us to this decision point today. Thank you.
Right, thank you councillor Warwick. I'm not sure that the leader was to be associated with certain TV personalities. May I now call upon the leader of the council to reply to the debate? There's no limit on this time, so councillor Adams King, please.
So, Mr Chairman and everyone, thank you, and Jan, thank you for likening me to Jeremy Clarkson. Whilst I might not be terribly happy about that, my daughter certainly will be, because she loves his farm so very much. So thank you everyone for what has been a good-humoured and well-evidenced and passionate debate, and I recognise completely that for so many of us who are passionate about the areas we represent, passionate about the councils that we sit upon, and that for an awful lot of us, as you can see, when we made the declaration of interest, 41 of us here sit on two councils. So, the dichotomy of view that exists in the county makes this a tricky situation for so many of us. And as usual, I'd just like to kind of run through everybody just to highlight the things that you said, because I think everybody here has made a really positive and absolutely valid contribution to the debate. Aaron is completely right to talk about the fact that no matter the decision here, we need government to understand the way in which we operate as local government and the pressures that we need to take. And the point of us doing more and more for And the point of us doing more and more for less and less is absolutely spot-on, and that links very much to Malcolm's point about the fact that this is a way that I fear ends up with more taxation for less representation. It doesn't matter which area you're looking at, it doesn't matter which of the maps we look at, that is the likely outcome of what happens. And one of the areas that we've been talking about, that Barry's been talking about in terms of that issue, that I know, absolutely understand how New Forest feel because I've done five meetings in New Forest to explain to people what's happening, to listen to their views, to try and answer their questions. And the proposal that New Forest are backing actually places them in a new unitary authority that is bigger than any of those that we are proposing geographically. And so that lies our problem. People in the forest do not want to be next to, do not want to be part of Southampton, but equally do they want to be part of a council that extends as far as Borden? And, you know, that's an enormous area for us to think about, but to get to the scale that the government requires of us, even if we have four mainland councils on the, they are still enormous spaces. Alexis makes the point about, absolutely makes a better point about delivery and risk. And so many of us have talked about risk, and it was good to see Alexis back and contributing to the debate today. And that, I think, is the pertinent point for all of us. This is a risk for us all. And being able to manage that risk and manage any risk, as Keith rightly pointed out at the beginning of the debate, is an important point. Alex, thank you for your contribution and thank you also for the contribution you made at Rushmore Cabinet. I know it's been a really tricky decision for you and I'm personally very grateful for your support because I think it has been a very difficult place for so many of us to be, as indeed Barry has rightly pointed out. There is no natural fit for an area. I feel our answer is better, and I've explained this to a meeting of quite a number of people who came to our Leamington meeting, that we need in the new councils also to have some hope for the future and to ensure that there is a centre to them that can drive growth and drive the prosperity that we hope will follow for all of those that succeed us as councillors in whatever geography local government has in Hampshire. And whilst I understand entirely the feeling of the residents of the New Forest in not wanting to be next to Southampton, as indeed many of the residents of my patch of southern Test Valley don't want to be either, the truth of geography is that they're next to one another. You can't move Southampton somewhere else. You can't remove the fact that most of the residents of my division go to Southampton General Hospital for their hospital services. Most of them choose to go and shop at Sainsbury's in Lord's Hill. That's just a simple fact and we need to, I think, be honest about the fact that that is part of what we need to do. My answer to Jonathan's point was going to be exactly what Jan just said about shared services. Absolutely right. Shared services are integral to what we do, and in fact, we are the largest shared service operator in the UK. And there are many ways by which we can manage services going forward. But the thing that we have to think about is that risk. And will those new councils want to have the risk of having their budget managed by a shared service to try and recreate the economy of scale? And thereby lies the challenge that Keith absolutely and has consistently managed. And I'm very happy, we're still writing the letter, but I'm very happy to make sure that we reflect those views. Number one, I think, actually, that we think that there is, I personally think that there is a solution that doesn't need us to reform. There is a solution through which we could still work much better together and get the same outcomes without unisisation. If they require it of us, then ideally we would be looking at much bigger areas, but that's not something that they wish us to look at. And the, you know, one of the consequences of that, and one of the things that Keith mentioned, was that risk that was originally not taken ten years ago. But funnily enough, everyone, if you remember that, that was creating a solent and a heart of Hampshire. We would have been divided into two then. So maps change, opinions change, but we still, at the end of the day, have to come up with a solution because not doing so, not responding, leaves the decision entirely in the hands of others without them hearing the local voice and hearing and understanding what we wanted to do. And that's exactly why Jackie's point was so correct. It comes down to that granular local level as to how this impacts people. Fran has always been a strong proponent of unitary councils and I completely understand why. I've been a unitary councillor myself and it is far easier than being both a district and a county councillor and working out to whom you go. And the risks and the debate that we have now absolutely needs to be something we put behind us when we get the final map because that's when we have, as Fran says, the opportunity for a fresh start once the decision is made. Making sure that children's services is managed correctly is completely right, as indeed are the health services and the different services that Juliette and then Jackie in succession mentioned. None of the above would have been a great option for us all to have. Indeed, the none of the above option wasn't one of those that any of us can take. I think it would have won overwhelmingly if we had that vote here today. But we don't. And we don't because it is our responsibility to represent our residents and it is our responsibility to make a decision and to put our best foot forward to government. And that's why Stephen's point was exactly right. Not making a decision, leaving it in a void, isn't something that any of us should be And both Peter and Gavin made excellent contributions about the real need for a respectful conversation about this, and it's a shame that it's not been respectful at some points. But it is what it is and putting that case forward is what is really important because, to repeat something that I've said before, what we say and how we conduct ourselves and the culture we create really matters around this. It matters to our residents, it matters, I think, most importantly, to the staff for whom we are responsible. And it will matter because it needs to follow into the new councils that we subsequently form. And Louise is right, we are all responsible for our own areas, but we're also responsible for the 1.4 million people of Hampshire that we look after. And they, and most importantly, the most vulnerable people, are the ones that we must keep at the heart of what we decide today. And many of them have fears, exactly as Anne mentioned. Many of them are concerned about how that looks. And I have an enormous amount of sympathy with Edward's points. I completely agree and I understand why he can't support a solution that puts the New Forest in with Southampton. But we have to come up with something that is, from our perspective, the best possible alternative because it is those vulnerable people, those people that we look after most, the children that we look after every day, about whom we need to think. And so, which brings me back to Jonathan's point at the very beginning. And it is something that I have gone to bed about, thinking about, something that I have woken up thinking about, indeed at 5am this morning, I woke up thinking about it. And that's why I have sympathy with the points that Keith made around local identity. I have sympathy, as you might imagine, with the points that Andy and Kim made very well around how we equally have a responsibility to the people we look after most. And I have an apology to make, I should have thanked East Hampshire at the very beginning of the speech as well because they have been fantastic in working alongside us and giving us that district perspective too. The dedication and the challenge and the support of Richard, of East Hampshire's cabinet and of the officer team there under Jill has been of enormous help. And so coming back to the final couple of points that Keith raised, we deliberately didn't talk about names. Names do matter and there are some great books written by Tim Marshall, I think, about geography and about the importance of names and the importance of that. But I don't think that it's for us to determine the names of those new councils because, number one, we don't know what they're going to be called, we're not exactly what the boundary is going to be. And number two, we may not be the people elected to them who need to decide in that year of transition how they operate and what they do and who they employ. So it's right for us to leave that for somebody else to choose. We did ask people what they thought about names as part of our engagement. I'm glad to say there was only one person who suggested that one of the councils should be called Council McCouncilface. But there were very many others, including a few Heart of Hampshire's for various different I'm really proud of the work that we've done. I'm really proud of the work that all of you have done in holding this administration and holding these proposals to account. That's the job of the opposition, it is the job of us all as councillors to make sure that that happens. If I'm honest, I think some people came into this process, not necessarily in this chamber, but some people came into this process with the thought that they had an answer and they needed to make an equation fit. We didn't. We looked at the evidence, we pulled together all of the criteria the government required of us, we made sure that we did a really thorough job looking at all of the different options that were in front of us. And it's a shame as well that we ended up in a place where there has been criticism of us in some of the other submissions. I've been really clear that we would not do that of anybody else. There is no right answer. And the answer that I was given when I was asked about it was that historic issues and frustrations are at the root of why that might have occurred. And my answer is to say that settling scores is not, there's no way to make policy, nor is it any way to undertake local government reorganisation. Doing so is to do a disservice to the people that we all represent. But I have hope. I have hope that at the end of the day, we will find the right answer. That right answer might be that we're all sat here in five years' time still having the same debate. I'm prepared to bet a very small amount of money that that might even be the case. But if that is the case, we've had a jolly good debate along the way. And what I ask you to do in thinking about the vote that you're about to take is to come back to Keith's point of risk. In the past, we maybe haven't taken risks that we should have. At the moment, we're taking a risk with devolution that we should. But when we think about the new structures we create, we must think about the risk that the change and the disruption, and it will be an enormous disruption, it already has been disruptive, it already has been taking our focus away from things that should be much more important. But think about the risk that that poses to the people we look after and the people who rely upon us most. I hope none of us here need to rely upon our services, but when we do, we need to ensure that the services that we give, that we receive are the best possible standard. That's why this is the right answer. That's why this is the best proposal we can put forward because we understand those proposals best. To suggest that a much smaller organisation might be able to understand the scale of what we do isn't disrespectful, it isn't something that there should be any challenge with, but it is a bit like saying somebody who's running the corner shop needs to take on the responsibilities that come with running waitresses. Let's listen to both of us because the corner shop runs really well and it serves its local community really well. But waitresses deliver as at scale, with quality and with pride and with the distribution systems that ensure that when you want to get your calamata olives or your focaccia, it's there. After next Friday, it's no longer something that we should be falling out about, any of us. So let's put it behind us, it's been pretty grim. But it's no longer our decision at that point. And so we need to go forward with competence and with professionalism and with kindness and with good humour. And in doing so, whatever the government decide for us all, we will make sure that we continue to provide the best possible services for the residents of Hampshire. I commend the paper to you. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, leader. And the recommendations that we're looking at are on page sixty-six, but do members wish to have a recorded vote? And if so, ten of you will need to rise. Right, that's more than enough. Thank you very much. It'll be a recorded vote. If you're in favour of the recommendations on page sixty-six, you will vote for yes and otherwise no or abstain. And that'll go on to the screen. Okay, that's noted. That clearly is thirty-four, four plus the additional one from councillor Crawford, thirty-five, and that's fifteen against and eight abstentions. Therefore, the motion is passed. Right, the votes will come up on the screen with your names alongside. Can you just check that that's as you wish? I'm sure it is. Well, we're not happy, but... Right, we now will move on then to item six on the agenda. And item six is the Local Government Pension Scheme Investment Pooling on page seven four one, and I understand that councillor Huggins wishes to make a declaration.
Thank you, chairman. Just a personal declaration of interest. I believe the multi-academy in which I chair is a pension partner, so it's a personal interest. I don't believe it impacts my ability to take part or vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is noted. Right, let's move on with that one then, and you'll see that I'm going to invite councillor Facker here to make a presentation of the report, and then I'll ask members after that if there are any questions they have for councillor Facker. So councillor Facker, please.
I understand not. I'm in received pension too, but no.
Thank you, I think I'm on, chairman. In this report before members, county council is being asked to approve the recommendations of governance of the Hampshire Pension Fund in order to comply with the... in order to comply with the government's programme for the next phase of pooling local government pension scheme investment. I'm very sorry that I may appear like I'm a ghost, but I think they may be trying to help me out here. Oh gosh, I've lost my... I am a shadow of my former self and I have lost my page as well. Anyway, it doesn't recognise me, my pa... There we are. So this is an important step in the governance and oversight of Hampshire's pension fund and the management of its assets currently worth about ten and a half billion pounds. As set out in the paper, the pension fund is having to respond to a challenging agenda from the government, starting with its stipulation that all LGPS pools must be Financial Conduct Authority regulated companies. Our existing pool, Access, applied to the government to be allowed to go forward on the basis that it would become an FCA-regulated company. But for unclear reasons, the government refused to grant us permission for the Access pool to form its own FCA company and stipulated that all eleven Access pension funds should individually decide on a new investment, existing investment pool to join. This was also what government told the Brunel Pool as well. Both the chief executive and S151 officers from all eleven Access Pension Fund authorities wrote to government officials but unfortunately have not received a satisfactory response. We are therefore having to face the reality that Hampshire must choose a new investment pool or be directed to a pool of the government's choosing with the powers that it is taking for itself in the new pension bill. The options for new investment pools have been discussed in detail by the Pension Fund Panel and Board with advice from both officers and external advisers. I'm very pleased that the panel and board have endorsed the selection of the LGPS Central Pool as the new investment pool that Hampshire will join alongside some of our former Access partners. On this basis, the director has sent a declaration of interest to join LGPS Central and is finalising a memorandum of understanding. Although it has been a challenging route to find LGPS Central and a journey that did not start with our choosing, both the panel and board and our officers are confident that this is the best partner for Hampshire, Hampshire's Pension Fund, to secure the successful management of pensioners' investments for the future. I'd like to thank the members of the Pension Fund Panel and Board and officers involved in this process for their diligence in getting us here. The recommendations that are therefore before you today will authorise the Pension Fund to move forward in the next phase of this important work and become shareholders and clients of LGPS Central in accordance with the government's regulations. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Thacker. Are there any questions from members for councillor Thacker of clarification? No, I see none. Is there any debate on the presentation? I see councillor Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to start by acknowledging that there are members of the Pension Board that are much more knowledgeable and experienced than myself on this subject matter. In the past year, I found that the subject matter is both complex but interesting and happily largely devoid of party politics. I think all members and officers are very conscious of the responsibility on our shoulders ensuring wise decision-making when it comes to investing over ten billion pounds of assets, governance that ensures pensions are paid correctly and on time. Ironic then that such a well-established and trusted scheme is being dismantled by a Labour government that, make no bones about it, is forcing us into this much larger pooling agreement. Yes, I can see that the motivation is to increase funding for large infrastructure projects. However, it comes at a price. Loss of local accountability and control. New layers of decision-making, blurring responsibility and control. Another version of merging organisations that involves risk and no guarantee of savings. As with local government reorganisation, we will probably end up with more remote structures, less transparency and less security of the benefits. It is yet another example of things being imposed upon us with no choice or even a proper public consideration of the benefits weighed against the disadvantages. Another scaffold of our democracy removed. It's a bit like walking the plank. Do you jump or do you wait to be pushed? I think today I'll decide to jump, but it is with great reluctance.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. Councillor Thacker, please.
Chairman, I suffer from this before. When I accidentally press the button, I can't turn it off.
I think that's no comment. Councillor Glenn.
I, on the other hand, Chairman, know how to turn the button on. I just wanted to say that there are one or two... The work of the Pension Panel is basically unknown to most councillors. I will start by declaring my own interest, having been a financial adviser all my life. But when I got the chance to join the Career Average Pension Scheme many years ago, I did so. And one of the best decisions I ever made. I am now in receipt of a career average pension. What you can't have as English-based councillors is that privilege. Now, this is a chance to get this out. None of you are allowed to do this anymore. But if you are a local councillor in Wales or in Scotland, they're still in receipt of career average pensions. So I would like to make sure that when we move into the brave new world of unitary status, all the English councillors have a debate about getting back into a system to get parity. The pension I've got is really worth having. I might add, what you can also do, it's a bit late for this group, is that if you had invested the money that you earn as a local councillor for the last few years, you'd be retiring on a bigger income than you're getting now. But I would like to basically pay a tribute to the officers on the Pension Panel. They are one of the most dedicated group of officers I've ever come across. And I'm not just talking about our own officers, I'm talking about the officers that we bring in from outside to ensure fair play. You've been listening to Tom Thacker, and I pay tribute to him because he's just taken over as chairman. And I've seen how good he is because we've just come from a conference in Birmingham discussing this very issue, where we met up with a lot of the protagonists involved in the central panel, the central group. And they're delighted to have us join them, and we are very lucky to have an organisation that wants us in. But most importantly, I want to pay tribute to councillor Kemp G. He needs to be mentioned today because he has chaired this panel with extraordinary finesse because of his own background in finance. He has been able to take us through very difficult stages, and that is why we've got over ten billion under management. We should be proud of that. It means that if you look at page, whatever it is, seven, forty-two, you look at that picture, the amount of money under management is in trillions. And that's what the government's looking at. That's one of the reasons why it wants to take a big interest in what we're doing as financiers. They want us to invest in government-sponsored infrastructure. Well, we'll have to do that, but we will make sure that we get a return on the investment. That is what our job is, to make sure we go on making profits for all our officers and for all the members who are members of this pension. So it is a jump, but we need faith. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Can I call on councillor Andrew Joy, please?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Much of what I was actually going to say has actually just been covered particularly in spades by councillor Glenn. But I would particularly like to add my own comments of support and thanks for the exemplary past service of councillor Kemp G as the chairman of the Access Pool. He was not the chairman of the Access Pool from the very outset, but his astonishing experience, skill and guidance has actually seen him in a role which has grown the reputation of the LGPS system. I'm particularly sad that, in fact, for what I feel are disingenuous reasons, government did not actually allow us to go down the route of setting up our own FCA company. However, however, the discussions in very fine detail and in very professional ways of our officers and indeed our advisers with LGPS Central means that actually I have every confidence that the same standards and improved standards will take us forward. So I don't think there is any concern that any of us should have about the future going forward. When I first joined the Local Government Pension Fund Panel and Board, we had less than two billion under management. And the fact that it is now ten and a half billion, I think, actually explains more clearly exactly how valuable, important and successful the whole process is. And this is hugely down to the work of councillor Kemp G, our excellent officers, and in fact, based on substantial experience, councillor Thacker, who's now taken over the chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Joy. Councillor Adams King.
Mr Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of words to echo the comments that both Jonathan and Andrew have made about Mark Kemp G, but also to thank Tom for taking the Pension Panel forward in such a way that I'm quite sure that we are in safe hands with whatever comes next in terms of the new panel. But I, in terms of making the comment that I was also wanting to make, David's partially made it in the respect that I think we should be really worried about the government's desire to divert the monies from the pension funds, the local government pension arrangements into infrastructure, because I fail to see that that is going to provide us with the same kind of return, that the really sensible investments and the ethical investments that we've undertaken over the last few years under the cross-party Pension Panel, it has done a fantastic job over many years for Hampshire to the extent that we face our fear of the problems that other areas of the country do. A lot of that is down to Mark Kemp G and his stewardship of what has happened. We need to have a really strong hand on how this is managed. Because giving pensions money to merrities and combined authorities to invest in their areas is probably a good idea from the government's point of view. My real concern is that it's... My real concern is nothing to do with you, Martin, in being worried about how you're going to spend it. My real concern is how the return is given to ensure that those people who have put into the pension fund receive the payment that they deserve in older age and in retirement. And so that, I think, is a real risk. But I can't think of anybody better placed to steward that forward than Tom. And thank you, Tom, for all of the work that you've done around this.
Right, thank you. Councillor Thacker, do you wish to speak in reply to the debate?
Chairman, thank you, Chairman, yes, please. Councillor Harrison made really good points, and what I would say to him is that there is a Chinese blessing, may you live in interesting times. We've always debated whether that's a blessing or a curse. And I think today, with the LGR, the devolution and the pooling, we've put that one to bed. There's nothing we can do, we must make the best of it. Councillor Glenn, thank you for talking about care. I joined, when I first became a councillor, I was in the care scheme. And I know councillor Kemp G and I are both very joined up in the thinking that if you want people who work for a living to become councillors, to give up future prospects that they may have in their industries or their other jobs, offering the care scheme, the pension scheme, to do local government work was just a good thing to do. And it was an awful thing that unfortunately was Conservative, removed from us from central government. I'd like to just pick up on everything that everyone said about councillor Kemp G. I joined the Pension Fund Panel as soon as I became a councillor in 2009. I think it was less than two years when Mark asked me if I'd be interested in being the vice-chairman, and councillor Thornber confirmed that that's what would happen. Since then, I've been his, Mark's vice-chairman. I could not have felt that I could accept the chairmanship earlier this year unless I had been mentored the way I was by councillor Kemp G. What we haven't mentioned also about councillor Kemp G is that he has been the chairman of the Access Pool, I think, for two or three years, Andy. And that is why Access is seen with great jealousy by other, certain other pools. I don't think that was the case with LGPS Central, but certainly it was, in my view, potentially one of the reasons why central government didn't want us to go FCA. I will comment no further on that. But once again, thank you all for your support, and let's hope we can take this forward successfully. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Thacker. We're going to go to the vote now, and you'll see it's on page seven hundred and forty-four, seven hundred and forty-five. All those who support the recommendation, please show. Anyone against? No, that's clearly carried, thank you very much indeed. That brings us to the end of the meeting. Members, you have absolutely excelled today. I'm proud to be a component part of this council. Excellent debates, quality presentations, absolutely superb. Well done, all of you. Thank you very much, and goodbye.